All right, I recommend non-public session 91A3A. The dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employer, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected one has a right to the meeting and two requests the meeting be opened, in which case the request shall be granted. Rule call vote. Alexandria?
Yes.
Bridgewater?
Yes.
Bristol?
Yes.
Danbury, yes? Broughton?
Yes.
Kebrin?
Yes.
New Hampton?
Yes.
Battle of Concord in Lexington, this day, 1775. There you are.
Thank you.
Good call. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I remembered that. Yeah, I was waiting for that.
There will be a quiz.
You better not pay attention.
I totally remember that.
Check it out.
Knock my stones. All right, approval or modification of agenda. I have one modification under nominations. I'd like to change section B2 to teacher nominations. Instead of assigned seizure, just leave it as teacher. Anybody else have any?
I'd like to add the letter J under new business for board member comments, please.
J.
J. J, as in Jack. Yep, board member comments.
Okay. Approval of minutes, April 5th, 2021 minutes. We have those in our packets. Any great errors or issues or concerns regarding those minutes? I can see everybody looking at them.
I've read them before, so I guess.
Sue, any issues?
No, I'm just looking for my marks, but no, I guess it has numbers.
You didn't have any more? Okay, all right. Everyone's quiet, and I just sent notes in. So I need a motion to approve those?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, moving along. Public comment? All right, correspondence?
Sitting around, I received some... Every year I participate, and Stacy Buckley used to do it, we help out Flum State University with their teacher orientation program. And we take a morning and we meet with their student teachers who are graduating. And we do like some resume writing with them, some interview skills. I just want to let you know that I do that and that's a thank you card from Flum State about that. So we just had a... We do a session for each semester. So there's a session in the fall and we did a session in the spring. So I like to get in front of the candidates, make a plug for your found, you know, send your resume down to us and give them some points.
Little recruiting.
Yep, little recruiting, yep.
Okay.
Yes? Can we talk? Sorry.
Yeah, that was a public comment.
Okay, that was a public...
Yeah, did you want to go? I can go back.
Yes, sorry. I've got another one. My other daughter's out in the car, so it's kind of...
Yeah, you couldn't... No, public comment was open for any comments.
Okay.
You just waved your hand, so I thought you were out.
I was waiting to say, yes, I have a public comment.
Oh, sorry. I was under the impression that was like, no, mom did.
Just waiting to you, because I haven't seen you in a while.
I guess so.
Awesome.
So I had, sorry.
So I wanted to first say thank you. We got the email from Pierre regarding mask wearing. I was excited to hear that. My wife and I had reached out to Pierre regarding the changes in the travel policy, which were a little bit concerning for us. And so I just had a few things that I wanted to say. Autumn just wanted to kind of speak for a second to her concerns about a lot of the effect this has had for some of the students. So I just wanted to start with, because the way I understand it is we're going by the New Hampshire Health and Human Services guidelines and the CDC's guidelines. So I just wanted to read from the travel guidance that just came out from New Hampshire Health and Human Services, which says, "The novel Corona disease, COVID-19 pandemic continues around the world and within the United States. Many countries, including the United States, continue to have a high incidence of COVID-19. And new variants are concerned having emerged that are more infectious and easily spread. Most international travel destinations continue to have a Level 3 for travel health notice indicating high or very high risk for COVID-19 respectively, with a recommendation to avoid travel. Therefore, any travel increases a person's chance of getting infected and spreading." This is just kind of... It's tied into what you guys had put out. And below, "Domestic travel in the United States of America outside of New England no longer requires quarantine upon return to New Hampshire. Although people..." You guys had posted. You have to click the little travel guidance in order to see the next point. But including wearing well-fitted face masks while traveling, practicing social distancing, and getting tested three to five days after travel, travel with a molecular or PCR-based test, and limiting public interactions after travel, even if not required. So when we click the little dropdown, it tells us before you travel, get tested one to three days before your trip. While traveling, wear your mask, which is what Pierre had put out through Mrs. Shoko, says. Masks are required in planes, buses, trains, all public transportation. And then this is directly from the CDC. After your travel, get tested with a viral test three to five days after travel. And write large letters. Stay home in self-quarantine for full seven days after travel. Even if you test negative, stay home in self-quarantine for the full seven days. If you test positive, isolate yourself and then you go into a 10-day quarantine." So the reason why I bring this up, we actually brought Autumn out to a couple of schools in Penns... Well, a few schools. It was like a 30-hour gigantic road trip out to Pennsylvania and all the way through New York, a little bit of schools. We abided by the rules, it was difficult for Autumn, she ended up missing fourteen days of school, missed some music stuff, missed some school stuff, but we were happy to do it, because I know there are some people, hopefully out here, feel like this is a gigantic hoax, and it's just something that's being made up on TV, but I know for myself, I have a friend that I work with who's lost four friends, who are veterans, to COVID, directly related, not like might have possibly been, but lost them. So, just a couple, a few points, so I was, like I said, I was really glad to hear about the masks, you know, because we're talking about the mask mandate, because it makes sense in order to keep our schools safe, which is a hundred percent true. And the question, I guess, then is, why are we getting rid of the travel quarantine? The way I understood it was, people want to travel, they want to go on vacation, I understand that. My kids want to go to school, that's something that's a necessity. Vacation is not a necessity. By definition, it's holiday, it's, it's a fun time to go out, do stuff outside of the norm, and the CDC recommends that we still continue the quarantining after that. The piece that we put out was the first half of that, it was not all of, all of what was recommended by the CDC. And the, I guess one of the, the hard parts with this is, you just bear with me, you guys don't want to hear this, but we're sending people right now, Florida is like the second highest rate right now, and that is the place that people want to go, I get it, right? Nobody wants to live in New England and, and stay in nasty cold weather and all of that, everybody wants to travel south and go there. So we have, I know, you know, Autumn spoke, so she's got three, three friends of hers that are heading down to Florida to vacation down there. Now, when we start to bring them back, we're, they're in the highest, well, not the highest, one of the highest, we'll say top highest rates, when they come back, we're with a new policy in place, they're going to have to wear masks, which is, which is understandable, but they're going to walk directly back into our schools with the chance of transmitting COVID. I understand that we've done an excellent job, I want to compliment Pierre and all of the people involved in, in doing what they've done so far, but I feel like we're, we're bringing, we're, we've gotten to the end of this, you know, we're, we're at, two months left in our school year, we have these kids that have so many of these things, it's hard for someone else's choices to be able to dictate health, education, opportunities, I feel like if we're changing this policy now at the very end, we, I've got a senior right here, that if for some reason we come back from a break, and we see a pile of kids come in that did not have quarantine, and we see an outbreak in the school, we, I've got a daughter here that's already missed, like I said, music stuff, she missed her entire junior track season, she's planning on going to do track in college, so, you know, so all of these things are not just a vacation or a fun time, these are the things that, that we fought so hard within our budget constraints to try to keep for our kids, and I just don't want to see them missing out on those, you know, those things. Last year we missed AP exams, which was an absolute debacle, because people all over the United States, the, whatever the group is, the DUCAP, you know, they couldn't figure it out, they had their servers crashed, kids' scores didn't get in on time, they said they were going to fix it, kids had to go and retake AP exams, I mean, it was, it was a disaster brought about, quite a few lawsuits against them. And I guess to end it is, I have no issues with people traveling, I mean, my parents have their trailer, they're ready to, my dad's retiring, he's ready to go, they're going to, they're going to travel on there, I'm okay with that, but I have a hard time, I guess, when going on a vacation and coming back into our district could possibly, and I understand that it could, what it has, it's happened all over the United States, could possibly affect this group of seniors, these whatever seventy-five kids now, and, and what the rest of their school year could look like. I mean, they already missed a whole entire year of school, so that's just kind of my point, like I said, I just, you guys can just hear it, take it for what it is.
Can I go? Yes, you may.
So like my dad said, I, I, I was here at the high school, and like to what, to what you said, I think you guys have done a really good job this year of keeping the school open and following COVID protocols, and trying to make this year as normal as it possibly can be, so I really do, I do applaud you for that. Although I will say, I was, honestly, there's, there's no better way to put it, a little bit disgusted when I found out that people coming back from vacations, and like my father said, going to like potentially COVID hotspots, were just going to be allowed back in the school with no kind of like testing or quarantining for, for any period of time. And like I have, I have a couple of friends and even a couple of teachers that are going to Florida over vacation, and I don't, I don't feel safe being in a classroom with them, even if they are like, you know, wearing a mask and social distancing, I still don't feel safe, like with that potential being there, and like especially if people are in like band class, and this is not, or like chorus, and it's not like a knockoff like Mr. Dunn or anything, but you do have to, for band class, you have to have your masks off, and even if we are spread out, it's still going to sit in the air, and I'm pretty sure it sits for like, what, like three hours or so long for the time? Not, not a hundred percent sure there, so don't quote me on that, but it does still sit around in the air, and it moves around in the air, so it's still, it's still there regardless. And just, I, I, I just feel like we're, we're kind of saying, it sucks to be you almost to, to the kids who are following the protocol and do have things to look forward to, and saying, the people that want to go on vacation, well, their time, their money, what they want to do is more important than you wanting to finish school, because like you said, I have a ton of stuff to look forward to, a bunch of my friends have a ton of stuff to look forward to, like we have, we have a track team that's doing really well, we have a baseball and softball team, which I think are also doing really well, we have juniors and seniors at prom, we have concerts, we have our spring concerts coming up, we have AP exams, which that's not even just a senior, that's a sophomore, junior, and senior thing, so we have, a vast majority of our school takes at least one AP class, so if we have to shut down the school, and everybody has to go home and do their AP score, they're probably not going to do as well, and not, that's not big of their intelligence, it's just the way it's structured online just isn't, isn't good for anyone, I don't think anybody did well on the online AP exams last year, but it's just, it's not really fair that we're, we're allowing people to go wherever they want to go with kind of no, no like regulation at all, and people who are doing well and not going anywhere and staying home and wearing masks and things like that are, are forced to suffer, and that me and my classmates and just everyone else I go to school with has to potentially risk missing the last two months, which are arguably the, the two more exciting months, especially if you're a junior or senior, we have to potentially miss those two months or keep going on and off and back and forth, because we want to let people go on vacation, which is, it, it seems kind of silly to me.
All right, thank you.
That was it. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, guys, for everything you've done this year, the sports teams, like our kids being able to perform, and music, and the plays, and everything, you've been great. I mean, we've had zero issues until we got to this point, it just felt like we wanted to be able to kind of as a family speak to, you know, what we felt like needs to at least be, at least be discussing, so, okay?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you.
Could you ask them to state their name and town, please?
Oh, Ken Braley, Alexandria, you can.
Thank you.
And I'm Autumn Braley from Alexandria.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
All right, announcements and recognition, remote learning curriculum coordinator update.
Sure. So the plans right now are working on getting our summer school.
Yeah, you're going to have to use your teacher voice.
Sorry, all time, summer school, we're, we're trying to get our summer school plans underway, there's two options, so they'll be onsite or tutoring remotely, and it'll run from July 6th to August 5th, and is there anything else I should add, Hannah?
No, so I think typically it's been primarily for special education students, this year we're opening it up to students who are at risk of not meeting competency, or just having fallen behind as a result of everything else that's gone on, so elementary principals are sending out surveys to parents to find out if they had a choice of which option, whether in-person or remote they would choose. We are looking for staff for the program, so I can collect the applications for that, and I'm a little worried, we might not have sufficient staff, so anybody out there who wants to apply, send it to me.
And across, how many grade levels will the opportunity present?
From preschool to twelve.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Superintendent, report.
Okay, so today was our first day of, you know, the new governor's order for nineteen, so it went pretty well, the busing was, well, that was my first concern, so the morning bus routes were basically one student per seat, some had two if there were siblings, but according to Scott Haynes, the coordinator over there for a student, he, he thought it was fine. We ended up with about seventy-six percent of high school students present, so that's about three hundred eighty-three out of the two hundred ninety-two, so we still have students, many students, you know, that are choosing remote fully, you know, we have over sixty like that in the high schools, then we have students that are choosing to be hybrid, and then students who are choosing to be full-time, and remember I told you before, we had a fairly large cohort of students that were already full-time. So, the buildings looked good, the classes, you know, they were spread out enough, they've added, the principals have added an additional lunch bar to spread them out, we're renting a tent in each of the buildings, so we can have some overflow there. So, it was, it was good that we had a couple of weeks to plan, and, and, you know, we did, we put the notice out to families to let us know what their intentions were, and then gave the principals a week to plan, so I think all things going well so far, let's see. This Friday, we have our second shot vaccination here at, at the high school, we're excited about that, so, so we'll have about two hundred people come through and get vaccinated as we did the first time. There's, you know, some legislation, the SB twenty, which is the voucher bill, is probably the one that was most concerning right now to us, that's the one I spoke to about, you know, basically where families could take their, their child's adequacy aid, so about thirty-eight hundred dollars, and apply it to a private school, and the Senate is not going through the normal process, they're going to tack it on to the, to the budget, and so that'll keep it from getting, having all of the public hearings and things like that, but there is some, you know, I feel like there's some information coming out of Concord that's not necessarily correct, you know, they're telling people that there'll be savings for the district, you know, so let's take a number like seventeen thousand dollars per child, or per student, for our cost per pupil, and if we give thirty-eight hundred dollars to that family, you know, some people feel that the difference is, so we'll call it fourteen thousand dollars as a savings, but when you pull one child, I think just like it's important for people to know, when you pull one child out of your building, you can't go into the budget and cut seventeen thousand dollars, it just simply doesn't work that way, you know, the only way you would significantly save is if you had an entire cohort of students, you know, like all of second grade from Bridge, Ohio, say, for example, chose the voucher, and then we could eliminate that teacher, you know, so likely these students will be spread out, you know, let's say twenty students chosen, they'll be spread out K to twelve across all of our grades, we still need those teachers, you know, so if you have one fewer chemistry teacher, or one fewer chemistry student, we still need to have chemistry, right, so we still need a teacher, we still need to have lights on and heat the building, so it's, and I spoke about this at a meeting last week, particularly for Newfound, being a tax cap district, remember, tax cap also part of the calculation is revenue, so adequacy aid at thirty hundred, thirty-eight hundred dollars is revenue, so for every child that left, and we lose thirty-eight hundred dollars, because of the tax cap, we have to find that thirty-eight hundred dollars in our budget to take care of. So it's, I think for a tax cap district, it potentially could, could be a big problem, and then the part that they haven't answered yet is the current students, we have about fifteen thousand students in New Hampshire that already go to private school, so if this was the past, they're not ours, it wouldn't hurt us the first year, because they're not our students, because we don't get adequacy aid for those students, they're going to have to find that money to, to fund that as well, so it's, it's really concerning right now, and, but it's all, everything in Concord right now, I, I have no problem with it, if we had a way of funding it and not hurting schools, you know, having choice is a great thing for your family, but when it's going to palli schools, I think that, that's a problem for me. And then lastly, last day of school, unless it snows again, will be June seventeenth, so we had one snow day, I think we had two remote learning days, so that worked out pretty well, so we're in good shape there. That's what I have for my report.
Okay. Elsa?
Yeah, yes, your question, okay.
Pierre, on the public hearing, you just stated that there would not have any further public hearing, that is not quite accurate. Once it gets rolled into the budget, the budget bill then goes on a tour all over the state, the Senate will do the same process, now that bill's got from the House to the Senate, and I don't know COVID, if they're going to do this rotating thing, or this three or four locations statewide, but it is open for full public comment, it's in House Bill Two, or House Bill One, so we'll have to understand which part of the bill, I expect it's in House Bill Two, because that's policy part, that, for legislation that needs to make it legal to do what you're doing in House Bill One, so public will have the ability to make comment on that particular amendment to House Bill Two, so there is a potential to have public input, and there are many studies of what's happened in other states, they've done this with the one that follows the child, if your child is not doing well, and you feel that a different kind of school would help your child more, it's more about services for children, not taking money away from the local school, studies have shown that there has really not been a devastating impact to the states that have done this in the past, there's all kind of references on the internet, I know the Josiah Bartlett Center did an analysis in interest to Josiah Bartlett Center, they're a public policy group, they're nonpartisan, so I just wanted to say that there are ways for people to reach out to get more information on that.
Thank you. Elsa?
Yeah, so, let's see, last week we had SATs through high school, things were pretty well, they were not typical in New York like they usually are, we had students in classrooms, every student had a laptop, she was by the school, went through smoothly, from what I could hear, let's see, students were doing well. Our softball team just had a game here against Franklin, and I heard that they beat them twelve to zero, pretty impressive, exciting. The track team is going to North Pole tomorrow for another meet, they had their first meet last week, they were pretty successful, it was only three schools at that meet, but you know, they throw a little bit for COVID, and they did pretty well, so that's exciting. Student council is currently working on a spring carnival, kind of make up for the loss of our typical winter carnival, and it's going to be a little bit altered, a little different, but it should have the same school spirit effect, so that's really exciting. Yeah, okay.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other announcements or recognition? Okay, moving on to new business, resignations, we have those in our folder.
So I'm, can I just invite the board to accept the resignation of, for Jonathan Yum and Mara Capzalis?
So, maybe a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay, moving on, nominations for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, the principal position for Danbury Elementary School.
So I'd like to nominate Norma Ross as a So I'd like to nominate Norma Ross as, to be our new principal at Danbury Elementary School. She's currently a teacher there and she was the top choice of our search committee.
I move that we accept Norma Ross as the superintendent's selection to be principal, starting July first.
I'll second, oh. I'll second. Thomas seconded. Any further discussion, any discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
And I have three teacher nominations, all for the high school. Anna Tarina for science, Emily Gatehouse for Spanish, and Sydney Warman for mathematics.
So move. Second. Any discussion regarding the nominations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? C, Bridgewater requesting use of Esser funds for ventilation.
So you have included in your packet a letter requesting from, from Ted Murphy, asking for some reimbursement from our Esser funds. They, as most of you know or may not know, they, part of their contract for having their own building, they do their own maintenance on most everything. But in this case, they, they made some improvements to the ventilation system before school started and they would like, and they're of course aware that Newfound School District received Esser funds and they would like the, for us to reimburse them for the twenty-four thousand, four hundred fifty, four hundred fifty-eight dollars. This is outside of the contract because you do have a contract that states that they're responsible for their own maintenance. So we had told Mr. Murphy that the board would have to just have, have to take this up.
Our plans to move that.
Yeah, I would like to speak to this. It's apparent, given the contract, that when we entered the agreement with Bridgewater Hebron Village District, that they would take care of all the expenditures for their site and so forth. And I believe the first paragraph shows quite a commitment to that by its most recent ventilation upgrades. And I think they've been very true and very true to the aspect of not expecting the district to maintain parts of the physical plant. But I agree with Mr. Murphy that the first sentence in his letter is the most important one. Since the safety of the students and staff of Bridgewater Hebron has always been our top priority and so forth, I recommend that we accept, to approve his presentation.
Yes, Frank. My only question is, Pierre, are, are we totally sure that that is a category that would be reimbursable under the funds?
Yes, just, just like the middle school project with ventilation, ventilation.
No, this is, they're asking specifically for UV lighting.
Yeah, UV lighting.
Oh, UV lighting and, but it was also.
And actually, it's just, it's just labor. They're paying for the labor, not even for parts.
I mean, I'd hate to vote for this and then find that it doesn't meet the category and then we're on the hook of the awkwardness of, well, you said that we could get reimbursed just because it doesn't fit that category. Why wouldn't you reimburse us whether Esser funds are not? So I just want to make sure that this is an expenditure that would qualify for those funds.
Yes, Sue.
Well, I, I agree with that. As long as it's something that we are allowed to do with the funds and even if it's our new con students, as long as it's in the category that's allowable, I would approve it. I'm, there, there's a lot of other things in here that would be allowable. So if that is a, they could change it.
But if you're looking at what they're, they're looking to be reimbursed for twenty-four thousand, four fifty-eight and if you look at what that twenty-four thousand is for, it's for labor only. There are no parts and the labor is for UV lights. It has nothing to do with the air handling units.
Well, I think the only thing it has.
Labor, it's labor.
And it says UV lights installed, that doesn't mean that, that didn't include the lights.
It's, I don't know if we have enough information. I don't, maybe Terry, one of them needs to come because my other question would be personally, why didn't they come to us prior to?
Prior to it, exactly.
I, I don't know when this work occurred. There's nothing in here that states when it occurred. My other question would have been in the fall. They absolutely could have applied for some of the air handling stuff. Now, I'm not completely opposed to this, but I just, I feel like we need a little bit more information to make a, a good decision.
We can bring it back to him and ask him those questions.
And it says the UV light decontaminates air when you do the system, but that is part of cleaning.
Again, I'm focused on labor. It's installation. Yes, it does. It says it right there. It says quoted amount labor. Labor, it doesn't say anything about parts on there. Labor, so they're looking to get reimbursed for the labor that those people used to do all that work with. That's my concern.
Yeah, because even up at this top, it says scope of work, install UV lighting systems, but it doesn't say if it includes the actual.
Parts or anything like that. The actual quote, so that money is going to get, it's going to go directly to pay for their labor to do all that work.
Well, not all of that work.
Labor, I see it as labor. It says quoted amount labor.
Yeah, I don't think.
It doesn't say anything else. Labor. It doesn't say parts. It doesn't, you're going by the black and white on here. It says labor. And I agree with Melissa, they should have came to us at the very beginning and we probably could have got some of the actual, some of the actual equipment replaced for them. And then they could have taken, they could have paid for the labor on it. That's, that's my concern.
It looks, it looks like these lights have already been installed and this was for the, the labor because it says trip three, UV lights installed but not working correctly. I, you know, I would like some more detail and unless the window has closed for reimbursement for the take-back work, I think it would be more appropriate for them to ask for reimbursement for part of the cost of that unless because it's after the fact, it wouldn't qualify.
No, it'll, the, the timing of it, all of the Esser funds are projects qualified going all the way back to March of twenty twenty. So certainly that's within that window then. So they met that requirement, there's no doubt about that. So I can find, we, Robin and I can find out more information, get more detail about the invoice that Heidi's concerned about. And also we can, we'll double check on UV lighting to make sure that's one of the.
Could maybe somebody come to our next meeting in case we have questions that arise at the meeting? It's kind of tricky to.
We could ask, I could.
Yeah, it's just, it's tricky to make decisions when we have questions about something without.
Sure, we can invite Terry to the meeting.
Okay.
Well, in the way this reads, it says a follow-up visit will be needed after trip three. So there's a potential that there's more.
There's more coming.
So maybe there's opportunity there to see what category that could fall under.
Okay, we'll do that and invite them to the first meeting.
Yeah. So we'll just continue that under old business on our next, our next meeting. Whoops, sorry. D, increased summer work pay for teachers?
Yeah, so our, currently our teachers get paid twenty-five dollars an hour for summer work and that's been that rate for many, many years. And it's really, looking around the Lakes region, the average, the, the bottom was at thirty-five dollars an hour for all the other regions. And we, we feel it's, it's time to move that up. It's, it's, especially now since we're already, Anne indicated that we, you know, we're having a hard time recruiting people working in summer. So we would like to bring this in line with the rest of the region. We could pay for the difference with the Esser fund because it's part of the, the learning loss piece of it. And then we would also like to move up, we pay our paraprofessionals in the summer fifteen dollars and we would like to bring them up to eighteen dollars an hour. So we're asking for thirty-five and eighteen and we think that's more in line with what the districts get and it's more in line with what the teachers per diem is. They, they make more, teachers make more than twenty-five dollars an hour. So it's, it's hard to recruit that to do that work. So we're hoping that the board approves this request and it will help us with our recruiting efforts. But it's something that really needs to stay in place if the board approves it as well.
Couple of questions. What, what rate scale are paras during the regular school year? What rate of pay are paras at during the regular school year?
Well, they vary because they're in your support staff handbook, you know, so they vary depending on their experience and which group they're in. So I think we have them starting at about twelve dollars an hour and the top ones are probably about, you know, nineteen or twenty dollars an hour. So depending on who from that group decides to, to work in the summer. You know, we felt that eighteen was, was pretty fair.
Okay, and the teachers? Do we only use Newfound teachers or do we use teachers from other school districts that might want to come here and teach or maybe even a teacher from another state if summer's here?
Well, I think so far we've only used our own. Is that right?
Sometimes like there was a, a nurse, we did not have a nurse a few years ago, so we hired a nurse. Sometimes we do hire from outside the school district if like there is insufficient staff. We priority goes to Newfound staff because we want them to work with our students. But there are times that we have to expand beyond that.
We were preparing, we're talking meeting today, if we don't get more of our people wanting to do this during the summer, then we're going to start advocating for help for teachers out, elsewhere.
So our own teachers would already have built-in venues as far as insurance and, and what our normal school year teachers get, they're covered year-round.
That's correct.
Correct? But somebody from another school district, we would not be providing any benefits to them as far as insurance for the period of time that they were here.
That's correct.
So.
The positions are all far less than full-time status for the summer.
Well, evidently the paras are. If you're talking twelve to nineteen during the regular school year and, and we want to bump it to eighteen, I'd rather see it being an extra two dollars an hour instead of all of a sudden it's a new rate that's substantially higher. If you're getting twelve dollars and all of a sudden you're getting, you know, fifteen dollars, that's a twenty-five percent increase over what you normally get as a para.
Can I, I believe that our para rates are higher than, than that.
The lowest, I mean, I think the lowest. Like, and we have hardly any of our people there. They're going to be more in the middle.
In the summer, in the summer school, didn't you say that they currently get paid fifteen?
Correct, yeah.
They get paid fifteen.
Correct.
They're at fifteen an hour in summer, the paras.
And they would go up to eighteen?
Eighteen, yeah. We're having a hard time recruiting, you know, so we just.
And you said the teachers are currently at thirty and they would go to thirty?
No, no, the teachers are at twenty-five.
And they would go to?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, twenty, okay.
Which brings them in line with up, the other Lakes region schools.
Did we get a packet on that?
No.
Oh, okay. So this is just, when would we need to make a decision on? Is this something that we could?
Well, it would be nice if we could have a decision tonight because we're trying to recruit now and we're sending out information to staff and if we knew what we were going to pay, that would be helpful.
Does this set us up for failure later on when there's not the Esser money?
Right.
And we have to potentially go back to the, the previous rates?
I missed at the beginning what you said.
I didn't know if it set us up for potential failure in the future to recruit staff. If we move these rates up while we have the Esser money, and then at the time when the Esser money is no longer, do we then really can't find staff because they were able to get it such, they were able to get this rate for a period of time and then when that money is gone, sorry, then we have to try and recruit back at the, the eighteen and the twenty-five?
I think we would have to leave it at the, you know, if you agree to the thirty-five and eighteen and we would have to, you know, find the money in our budget for that. I mean, we're not talking that many employees during the summer, you know, we're not, it's not like fifty thousand dollars. I mean, it depends on the number of staff, you know, we're, it's three days a week for three or four, four hours for five weeks. You know, I mean, it's a pretty minimal amount of money and I'm confident that, you know, every year we have staff changes where somebody, you know, somebody who retires, who's a veteran teacher on the top of the salary schedule, we hire somebody that's newer. There's savings there, there's savings in changes in insurance plans, health insurance plans when we hire people. I'm confident we would find it. I mean, I understand the question, it's a good question.
Your plan is to fit it within the current budget, not add anything further for the next year?
And these are certified staff?
Right.
Fifteen dollars an hour? I, I, I think that for the worth of the quality of the teacher in certification for these positions, it's well worth pumping it up and even permanently if we need to.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you, we really are, hopefully, have it be our teachers and our paraprofessionals because they're the ones who know the students.
Absolutely.
And I know in other districts, you know, we speak about this and they're talking about they're doing stipends just because we know we have to meet these kids where they're at.
To think about it, yeah.
And you wouldn't, you wouldn't probably need as many staff on, on a regular basis if we weren't catching up with the mom and the father business. I mean, like, this might happen for two to three years, but then after that, probably we're down a little. Don't know.
That's the hopes. How many kids are in the summer school program?
We're collecting that data right now. We're trying to see who, how many would be in person versus tutoring. So in person is a longer, it's a program rather than just coming for a few times a week for an hour each time or doing it online. So we would, we need to see what the needs are and then what the staffing is and then we may have to turn some families away from coming in person if we don't have enough staff. Priority would have to go to special education students if it's part of their IEP.
We'll know later in the spring, we can tell you how many students will be left.
Would the remote ones be full-time, five days a week?
No.
It would only be three days for five weeks like Pierre was just talking about?
It would be an individual plan for each student depending on what they needed the tutoring in. So it depends how far behind they are and what, how many subjects they need to get caught up on.
So that's a different category than summer school?
It's the same. We're going to do it over the same course, but you may have one student who maybe needs six hours a week of tutoring and another student who needs to come to the full program for the four hours a day, three days a week. It, it really depends. Like, we're trying to evaluate and assess students based on the data that we have available.
I'm not comfortable granting an increase without having my data.
Well, right now we're enrolling students. I mean, we can tell you the number of students, you know, in one of the main meetings. But part of the, the issue is we're not getting teachers that want to teach in the summer. So it may not, you know, we have needs that need to be met because these students have IEPs which are required by law. And if we can't provide the staff, the teaching, the teachers to do that, you know, we're going to be out of compliance there. teachers to do that, you know, we're going to be out of compliance there. So right now, it's still only the middle of April, so we're, you know, we've asked all the principals of collecting data, they're surveying families, and we're, you know, we're opening it up not just to specialized students, but other students or families that want, you know, more enrichment programs and things like that. But we need to know about this, whether or not the board supports this, to help us move forward.
I make a motion to increase the summer teacher pay to thirty-five dollars, and the paraprofessionals to eighteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Abstentions?
Mr. Paran and Heidi?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Next, policies for first reading?
So we got those in the packet last...
Yep, last meeting.
Last meeting, sorry.
Yes, and I thought I grabbed that packet, but unfortunately, I grabbed it wrong.
So your first, your AFA, is just simply the policy that states that you do have a school board evaluation. And a couple of changes here, if you recall, later, earlier this winter, the board wanted to change the evaluation from a March to an October, so that was changed in there. And just a couple of little wording things that were changed, but that's the significance there. And then that went along with, then we also distributed for the board members, we emailed everybody the actual evaluation tool itself. Heidi, if you want to take that over, or...
I only heard from Sue, and I made my own comments, and I resented back out with the highlighted changes on there, and I have not heard back from anybody since then. And I sent that out. The days are running together, Saturday?
So I think what was discussed at the policy committee was to try to align the evaluation tool with what actually the board does. There was a lot of, there was like an entire section on curriculum development. And I, and all the time I've been the superintendent, never seen a board do curriculum development. So I think the thought that Heidi and Sue were hoping was that to go, have board members go through it, and I mean, we could do it, I'd offer to work with Heidi and Sue on it, if you want us to do that, and then come, you know, then we could bring a draft.
I mean, we can still do the first reading of this, and just do the, and do the evaluation form separate. We could just do, how about if we just go over the first read?
Sure.
And since you didn't get enough information for that, let's put it on as new business next time.
Next time, yep.
And we can, we're meeting on May twelfth. I think our next policy meeting, so if you want to work on it, then we could do it.
Twelve or thirteen?
I thought it was twelve. Maybe, but, you know...
The Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does anybody have any other questions or issues regarding first read for all of these policies?
I had a question about one of the policies in the packet, or in the packet, I don't know which one. It was the one for suspension, and, you know, long-term suspension on...
JICD, yep.
Oh, Student Discipline and Due Process, sorry. I'm like, I was looking for the word suspension, but, yeah, sorry.
There was one section in there that I wanted to discuss, and potentially a modification to, and it's the one that states if a student is found having a gun at schools, that we shall expel them for years, I believe that's the language. My question on that is, I know sometimes stuff happens, and a shall means we can't do it no matter what the circumstances were. And I think it should be may. And I'm sure that's probably below play from School Board Association or something like that. But I, I can envision particularly up in this rural area, you know, what I'm seeing is it's hectic in the morning, mom's got to get the kids out the door, she's got to get to work, and the high schooler goes out to start his car, and he comes in and gets, "Mom, my car won't start." And mom says, "Oh, your dad's away this week, so just use his car." Well, dad had just gone hunting it, and the back of the, in the trunk was a hunting rifle. Kid has no clue, goes to school, and at the end of the school day, he goes to put something in his trunk, and there's several people walking by, and they're looking, and there's a rifle or shotgun in there. And our hands are tied. Could be our best, highest honor roll student, perfect little child, had no intent of any ill reasons bringing a gun to school. And I just think it ties our hands too much, in that we should consider making that language may instead of shall.
That would have to look under RSA's. Because that's based...
Right. An appeal, an appeal process for special circumstances?
I don't think there's an, they don't talk about an appeals process.
I know.
There's an appeal process for all suspension. At any type, at any time, including expulsion, there's an appeal process.
Well, if it's a shall, let's...
That's going to be, I mean, this can be first read with recommendation from, uh, policy committees.
Can we do a little bit?
Because is the shall necessary based on the RSA, is what we need to look at?
I was going to say, is that...
We have to look, we have to figure out if that is specific wording based on the RSA, because it says right there, R, based on RSA, pursuant to RSA 193, something called thirteen, section four. Any student who brings or possesses a firearm that's safe school does, has to sign, defined as RSA 193-d, section one, without written authorization from the superintendent, or doesn't need, shall be expelled, except. So I think they're just, if that's a question, then I feel that that just needs to be looked into. I don't feel if it's something that we should be debating here, because it might be absolutely null and void if that's the way to watch it.
Well, I can...
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up on first read.
I can research it, I can research it, and you can bring it back to us.
Okay.
So Melissa, your motion is for I through, or one through seven, or all the way through the handbooks, job descriptions, which is it, I'm sorry?
All, no, just one through...
Seven.
Six, seven.
I second that motion.
But not, but not including three, right? You got to weigh the...
Does it have to be first reading with full-on language, or we're just saying, look at that before second read?
Yeah, exactly.
You can still accept it as first read.
We can accept it as first read, that was our input, based on first read, to go back for, to be verified for second read. That's how I interpret it. I moved to accept the first read for policies AFA, AC, JICD.
I'm sorry.
All of the, the policies for first read, all of those ones, numbers one through seven, that are listed on the agenda for first read.
Okay, even the evaluation of the school board?
Yes, because that's a policy, that's not the actual evaluation.
Okay, and next meeting, we're going to discuss...
The actual evaluation, because that's not in this packet.
Thank you.
Yes.
And we seconded that motion, that we accept.
All right, any further discussions regarding the policies? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, that's my, sorry.
Thank you today.
Okay, next, job description, technology support specialists.
Yep, I reviewed this with the policy committee, it's just simply updating the language, making it, really bringing it up currently to what that person does right now. And so you can see that it just lists some of the programs, the Google Suite, and so on and so forth. So it's just updated, hadn't been updated since two thousand nine, so you can imagine the technology that's happened since then.
And this would fit others as well, and I just, I should sort of tailor to a person, it's tailored to what you, to the job, yeah.
Yep. And then, like...
I need a motion to approve that.
Yep.
Go to approve. Technology support specialist job description.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, next, handbooks.
Support staff handbook, support changes. One was, for the purpose of calculating overtime, what we're suggesting is changing that language to the paid holidays will be considered hours worked. So what that means is, so if we had a paid holiday on a Monday, and one of our maintenance workers got called in on a Saturday, let's say there was a broken water line or something, they had to work, and currently, they don't get paid overtime for that Saturday. They get their Monday, because Monday was a holiday, that's, those are not hours worked. So it's not really fair that they, they come in on a Saturday, and they don't get paid overtime. So we feel, and it's not a thing that happens very often, but if they do, were to get called in on a Saturday after having a holiday during the week, that those hours of the holiday should count as hours worked. That's what that does. The other thing we recommended to the policy committee was to add, they get free holidays paid during the year. We feel that's pretty light, you know, looking around the Lakes Region, it was more anywhere from four to ten, looking at the different schools, so we're at three. So I recommended that we add Veterans Day. So I mean, we have days that they're, we don't allow them to work, and then they don't get paid. You know, it's like you close up the shop, and you don't get paid that day.
That's the day after Thanksgiving too, right? And that's not a paid day, the day after Thanksgiving?
They don't get, so if, if you approve this, they have Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's. That would be their four. Right now, they have Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's. And then last thing was, the salary schedule just got updated per the budget, and what the budget committee added in there, the one, one and a half percent. So that's the support staff handbook.
Program specialist handbook? There wasn't other than the, the information in the beginning, there's not much difference?
Nope, there's nothing really changed there, just updating it. We just updated policies.
So I need a motion for those handbooks?
We'll go through the support staff handbook and the program specialist handbook.
Need us, looking for a second?
Yes, second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the handbooks? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Next, years of service and end of year barbecue.
So I understand that the last day of school of the year, the, the district throws a barbecue for all the staff, it's a hot day at school, and we all gather here, and the school board comes, and we do a recognition for years of service with my first staff and all that. And I know that last year, of course, you weren't able to do that, but I just want to check with the board, you want to proceed with that? I think it would be a great thing to do for our staff. I'm just looking for some input from the board, if that's what you want to do, then we can begin planning that.
Yeah, because we did the barbecue, and then you guys had your little, the years of service, you guys did the presentation.
Yeah, the presentation, yeah.
Right, we would figure out that, yeah, we would, we'd find a better way to do that.
Yeah, we were out back here doing it. Yeah, I remember setting up, let's...
Yep, remember serving.
Yeah. I think we should try and do it as, you know, as best we can. I think that's important, to acknowledge everything that they've done, I mean, it's been, since we didn't do it last year, it'll be like two years, so it'll be good. And it's good for the teachers to get together, too.
Okay, so I'll take that as, is everybody opposed to that? Okay, so we'll move forward on that. Then we have a request for the Washington DC trip, middle school, Donna Bridges, this is for next May, so she's well in advance here. And you can see her request, and you can see a sample itinerary.
So last year's eighth graders did not go? Or is it this year's eighth graders that aren't going? Both? Or did we get both that didn't go?
Right.
So there'll be two classes that, by next year, there'll be two grades that haven't gone, correct?
No, only one. No, no, you only missed one year.
Because last year, they did it in the fall, right?
Oh, no, you missed two.
Didn't one year, they switched it to the fall?
No, no. Last year, they, they did get to go.
Oh, they did.
The brothers class went. They're freshmen now.
Right, they went in the fall, right?
Yep, and the freshmen, the eighth graders now are going to go next year.
Right, they have the option to go, our ninth graders are pre-approved, I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing out on a class. I was worried we were going to miss out on a group, is what I was looking at, when I was looking at that.
I was thinking that last year, too.
Yeah, so just one grade catches us all up.
So can board members be separate?
I know. I think you guys, I think that gets asked every year, doesn't it?
Probably.
So Heidi, looking for approval for that.
I make a motion that we approve the class trip for the middle school trip on the DC in May of two thousand and twenty-two.
That's a good motion.
May and June. It's May and June.
Oh, is it two months by end?
It's May thirty-first to June third, so technically, it's May and June, but, okay.
All right, any further discussion?
I just wanted to say, I heard that they, they are completing a World War I memorial too.
Yep.
Or really, it's a... So you can look at it, some of the things that they have a crucial or ongoing degree or library, but, but yeah, by the time they go, that might be something that we'll see.
Be another piece of...
And looking at this potential agenda, they're going to be well-behaved at night, because they're not going to have any energy.
They'll be exhausted.
They'll be exhausted at the end of the day.
That's how it usually works.
That's good, that's good. That's the whole plan.
Good luck.
Good team.
Wear them out.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, board member comments?
Okay, a couple things. I just think, one, this should always be on the agenda. I feel that we don't have a chance to speak as board members bringing up concerns or ideas or whatever. I just like to see this on, on the agenda going forward. The other thing is, I want to, I, I'm going to publicly thank Robin for the change in the manifest. Before, when we had to do it, we were just signing off, we didn't get a chance to actually make comments on what was being spent. We just went in and looked at it and signed off, and it, to me, it became a moot point. So I'm very thankful that Robin took the initiative to change that around, now that at least gives us a chance, when we get them to look at it, and I, she's already, I can already, she's already shaking her head, because I've already asked her several questions about some of the items that we're spending money on. And my big concern with this, with this whole manifest thing, is that the Amazon payments that we're making, they're just so scattered, and there's so many of them, there's absolutely no oversight on these Amazon payments that we're making. And I question it, I've been questioning it every time, well, what are we spending this money on? And, and I've already talked to Robin about this, but we, we need to start looking at ways to consolidate and coordinate this purchasing, because I feel like we're just wasting money on Amazon, and I feel that, that they're allowed just to go and say, "I need, I need twenty pencils," or "I need ten notepads," or whatever. I feel that we need to look at it, and I, not to heap more, more work on you, I'll even help you out during it, it's no problem. But, and she's already been looking at how to purchase items and quantities to save money. But I just, I, nothing irritates me more when I look at those manifests and go, "Now, what are we spending five thousand dollars on at Amazon?" When I feel that we can do a lot better job of consolidating and coordinating this.
And Robin mentioned that to me, that you made a comment, which is, which is fine. I'm glad you're looking at the manifest.
Yeah.
And we've talked about that, consolidating, and I know a lot of districts, like where I used to work, we would go out to bid for office supplies.
Right, and I understand that we're smaller, we don't, we don't have a huge district, but, I mean, we should be able to control it better, being a smaller district. You know, I can remember back in the day, you know, each school had a supply closet. I mean, do we have anything like that, you know, where you can go and, you know...
I'm sure they have some.
Have the supply closet, not stand in there and go, "Okay, here's your ten sheets of paper," or whatever. But I just, I mean, I, you know, we're looking at ways to control money and control our spending. spending, but like I said, every time I look at these manifests, I'm like, what, now what do we spend it on? I mean, I.
Well, a few years back, a number of years back, we did decide to consolidate a lot of our purchases because it would be cheaper and, you know, such as copy of paper and things like that. So I don't know how much of that is still going on. The other thing is each teacher has certain allowance that they can spend each year, don't they? There's no certain.
And they're budgeting for it.
And thinking that this is coming out of them, like if you were having individual teachers ordering, wouldn't this be coming out of their allowance?
It is.
They get, yeah.
Yeah, they're not going over budget for their supplies.
And I always look at it like, yes, some of the things are so much cheaper there. So if they're ordering the things that they normally order, such as pencils, I mean, it's cheaper a lot of times to go there.
It could be. I did go out for, not, I wouldn't call it an RFP. I did go out for bids for the copy paper because I noticed some people buying copy paper through Amazon. And, and sometimes you're right, it is, it can be cheaper and certainly faster. It's just, it seemed a little unmanageable. It's every day, there's five or six Amazon orders going through and that means I'm touching it, that means Kathleen's touching it. And we are a very small district and we, it is difficult to go out to RFP for W B Mason or school specialty and give us better prices because we just don't have the quantity. As a matter of fact, we went out to bid for the paper, we put it to W B, we went out to Central Paper and some place else too, and Central Paper just wasn't entrusted because we go through 400 cases and that's just not worth your time. Did have to go all the way up to Danbury to deliver it. So.
Yeah.
Any suggestions are great and I'm, I'm certainly looking into it and I do think the Amazon's a little, a little out of control. I, I agree.
I think Heidi brings up a good point there. A lot of disparate sort of shotgun manifest for Amazon. It keeps happening month after month and it, it speaks to the idea of maybe looking at a bulk order and pre-programming what teachers might need in supplies in a handout for that bulk order so that they could select through their buildings. And I would think that the teacher supplies would be in the supply line item in each building for the budget so that if they put that money in there, they, it would be a one-time expenditure in the bulk order through supplies and they wouldn't need to be doing it. It's probably not random, but it does seem like it.
And something?
Yep, no, we're, we're talking about that and I think we can continue to talk about that. It's a good idea.
Uh, do any other board members have comments?
I have, we have the facilities committee meeting minutes for March quarter actually. And they're talking about ventilation needed for the world of schools and I would have thought we had to go through some kind of testing if this whole COVID thing started, but apparently that wasn't picked up. Manhattan, approximately 40% of the buildings needs ventilation. CES. First floor has ventilation system not working well, it's old, very, parts are no longer available. Things like that, I would have thought would have already come up. It's like, they should.
Well, they are. And I think.
If you look down at the bottom there, it says Jason talks, some areas of the schools have in-room air circulation systems. They're kind of. Right, I know, but they're kind of covering those 40% like classrooms and things like that and just want to make it, no, that we're not just, it wasn't something that was just completely ignored. It was just.
Yeah, I'm surprised you've gotten this far. And this is, you know, but, and then the other thing was about Manhattan water quality in the school. I, we had that tested every year and, so it was last test efficient or something?
It was, yeah.
Really bad.
High, had high quantities of iron in it and it's not, it's not, the school is coming from the outside. So we're in, we're in discussion right now how to get a filtration system built, we need to build a filtration system inside the school. So at least it's taking care of our end.
We have news about that.
Okay.
So there was a meeting with the water commissioner from Manhattan to that and he told everybody that they have made the correction on their end.
On their end?
So the water coming in from the town was bad water, was contaminated and we weren't using it for a long time. But, so I, I'd asked for a meeting to talk to the Manhattan town to see what they were doing to resolve the problem. And they, and they have and they're confident that they fixed it, but we're also, I think Jason Torrisi is going to have the water tested inside the school next. There was a plan to put a lot, a lot of filtration system in there, but it appears that we're not going to happen.
Good, good.
So they were able to correct it themselves. And then we're going to test it inside the village just to confirm that it's.
Good.
So that's in the works.
Good.
Here. Was this water tested by the state?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's testing protocols that all the schools.
Well, I know that, so I'm shocked that all of a sudden we're finding out.
If you've been reading in your facilities committee meeting minutes, it's been going on all year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not all of a sudden, it's, we've known about it all along.
Yeah, and they've been doing, like they haul in water.
Yeah.
You know, and plus the sink in the kitchen has a system on it. So the, the custodian will go in there and fill up X amount of buckets or Gatorade containers and then kids pull their water from there during the day. But they don't, but they don't use the water.
It's not our internal pipes that are causing the problem.
No, it's coming from the outside.
Yeah.
Yep. It's nothing inside the school.
The town water system.
It's a town water system, yep.
Any other board member comments?
Thank you for allowing me to do it.
No worries. I think that's a good, a good modification to the agenda because that way things that maybe get talked about could be put on the next agenda anytime soon. That's good. Public comments? Financial approval of manifests?
Uh, move to approve the manifest by month of March.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. I move to adjourn.
Don't do that.
I'm still doing that.
I'm retiring, Robin.
It's a legacy position.
We're again, we're again, stop!
And the E motion.
Oh, okay. So this is the calendar. This is exactly the way it reads last.
But I think we have to agree as, I think we have to discuss it in non-public.